We're not in the hurry, we're just ready.
Oh, you're just ready, I see. Well, we're not quite ready, we don't go on the air here until 7:30. So, we'll just be at ease here.
All right, we'll be there.
Oh, you're gonna be in fine shape by this time.
I think so.
But maybe he can't sing in the radio.
I know, I can't sing.
You have to have two qualifications there. And you have to be a little off with on- blind glasses, can you do that?
Oh, yeah.
I went to Annie, get your gun out there. They were great. And they had a sawhorse with wheels on it. Yeah, so four Indians were riding around, they were stressed, you know. Cowboys, horses, sawhorses with wheels, chased up the Indians and the cavalry. Their sawhorses were chased up.
That would exhaust all the chases.
Is that legit, is that timely? Okay, that is timely.
I have the presentation of the colors this evening by American Legion Hellgate Post Number 27.
Trail forward, march. Trail, hold. For that, march.
Please join me now on the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, march. Left, face. At a trail, call left, march.
Thank you, gentlemen. All of the council members are present except Councilmen Sampson and Rice. Are there any changes to the minutes? This is Craig.
Last week, I showed the picture of down, out to lunch at Caris Park, and said that Jeff Badna took the picture. And he says, he wishes he had taken the picture. But the truth is, is Mark Gorseth from the Darkroom Camera Store took it. He's a local photographer.
Probably if you look real close, you can see Jeff in the picture. Any other changes? If not, the minutes will stand approved as corrected. Items for final consideration, we have one item from the Platte Annexation and Zoning Committee. Mr. McLaughlin.
A city-initiated zoning request is on the recently annexed Westmont Gallagher acreage, Resolution 5109, unzoned to a combination of C Commercial District and C1 Light Industrial or to I1 Light Industrial District. Although a quorum was not present, the committee recommends that council pass an ordinance to zone the recently annexed Westmont Gallagher acreage, Resolution 5109, from unzoned to I1 Light Industrial and I would so move.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Craig.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hermes.
Yes.
Lucino.
Yes.
McLaughlin.
Yes.
Potts.
Yes.
Reedy.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Passes 10-0.
Motion carries. We'll go on to public comments from citizens. We, at each meeting, allow three minutes for any citizen who would like to address the council. We ask that you state your name and address.
My name is Jackie Cross, I live at 429 Madison. I pledge allegiance to the earth, the unique life source of the galaxy, and to the mute public which must take a stand to save our one planet under the sun arbitrarily divided, striving for liberty, justice, love, and truth for all. I'd like to invite the city council and the public to a march tomorrow to protest the destruction of the Badger 2 Madison area in the Lewis and Clark National Forest. It's a small 116 acre, 116,000 acres of pristine wilderness area adjacent to Glacier National Park and the Blackfeet Indian Reservation and Bob Marshall Wilderness. And it's the home to many endangered species, grizzly bear, wolf, peregrine falcon, bald eagle, and often endangered animals that could become endangered if the drilling permit is allowed to go through. The Forest Service has approved the drilling permit for FINA Corporation. It is expected to approve a drilling permit for Chevron Corporation to go in there and build some oil wells. There's a .91 percent, less than 1% chance, that they'll find any oil. If they find any oil, the maximum amount they would have would only last the United States for 17 hours based on the current rate of consumption. So, they want to go in there, destroy this land, which is totally surrounded by wilderness, which could be designated wilderness itself for this very small percent chance. I think the city council members should attend, and the mayor as representatives of the public, the public has opposed this wholeheartedly, almost wholeheartedly. Ninety-five percent of the thousand citizens that commented on the final environmental impact statement asked that the Badger 2 Madison be left the way it is. And there was also petition delivered with over 5,000 signatures on it asking for congressional protection for this area. It's, the march starts tomorrow at noon at the University of Montana Oval, and they'll go to the federal building from there.
Thank you, Jackie. Any other citizen comment? Anyone else like to address the council? If not, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Chuck.
Only one item on the consent agenda tonight is to approve a rental rule agreement with Missoula Housing Authority, retroactive back to February 12, 1991, for Housing Authority to provide subsidies for new tenants, caretakers, and cemetery.
If anyone would like this to be returned to the Finance and License Committee report, now is your opportunity to do so. If not, please call the roll.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hermes.
Yes.
Lucino.
Yes.
McLaughlin.
Yes.
Potts.
Yes.
Reedy.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
11-0.
Motion carries. Go on to committee reports, the Cable TV Committee, Mr. Hermes.
The committee recommends the establishment of a five-member city council, approved Rattlesnake Resident Committee to perform a need assessment for a Rattlesnake Valley public access channel. And I would so move, and to speak to this for a minute.
Mr. Hermes.
This recommendation was basically adopted, if you notice your notes from the, I believe it's the fourth paragraph to the end, from Mary Canny, who works at MCAT. Basically, this would lay the groundwork, or help lay the groundwork for promoting and getting the people of the Rattlesnake familiar with MCAT and cable access for the city.
Discussion. Mr. Harrison.
I guess, I don't understand why we want a needs assessment. How do you perform a needs assessment? What, I mean, does it cost anything? What do you do?
Mr. Hermes.
We didn't really discuss the details of that during the meeting about what we would do. But I imagine it would be similar to what was done before the TCI agreement. Fred was here, then maybe he could speak to that.
That was, that's it.
Mr. Rice.
Bob is correct. I believe that it would be a smaller scale effort than the original needs assessment that ultimately led to the TCI agreement. I would presume that we would use the, some of the information that is in the TCI, or the agreement that, or the assessment that went before the TCI agreement, and do a smaller scale thing in the Rattlesnake Valley. That was all done, as you will recall, entirely with volunteer labor, so there are no costs associated with it.
Mr. Harrison.
Do they just, they just go around the neighborhood then and ask if people want to have public access?
The, I don't know exactly what the specifics of this process would be. But there was a fairly active attempt to make contacts throughout the city during the TCI assessment. In other words, all the voluntary, all volunteer organizations, nonprofits, interested citizens were solicited through a wide range of devices. So, I presume that a similar sort of thing would be done. I don't know, I don't think that there would be a door-to-door campaign. But I expect a fairly heavy, some sort of public meeting situation as well as some mail solicitation would take place.
Mrs. Schaefer.
I would imagine that a need assessment is somewhat similar to a survey. And it's certainly not a need, no one really needs TV. But I'm sure it would be hard to convince anybody of that. But this company, Satcom, has already conducted a survey to see if those people wanted T, this public access. And as I understand it, the results came back, 80% didn't. And an informal show of hands at one public meeting, they didn't want it. So, I don't know what this survey could accomplish that has not already been done unless we're going to keep on surveying them until the answer comes out the way some people want it to come out.
Mrs. Shay.
I don't think there's any way, Donna, that you can, and Doug, this is for your information also, that you can aim in a particular direction with a needs assessment. Because it is, it is supposed to be a fair surveying of the community or the audience that you are addressing. Now, the public library did a needs assessment about five or six years ago. They needed to determine who their audience was, what it liked to read. You know, when, what hours did you use the library, that kind of thing. And I would imagine that this would be true with surveying the needs of the Rattlesnake with respect to cable services. Donna, the straw vote that was taken at the meeting that I was present at Rattlesnake School was not very scientific. And I would say that it showed a number more hands in the majority against paying for cable rather than paying for it. But it certainly wasn't scientific.
Mr. Lucino.
Well, I'd like to make a point about consistency. In other words, if we polled those subscribers to TCI who are presently receiving the MCAT signal, we probably would get fairly similar ratios as if we polled Rattlesnake residents. In other words, what we would like to do, and what, I think what the committee had a consensus on, and correct me if I'm wrong, committee members, is that we're simply trying to make available the MCAT signal to people within the city limits of Missoula. And this is how the MCAT channel was originally conceived, that this would be a station available for residents and citizens living in the city limits. Now, we do know that the Rattlesnake is in the city limits. And therefore, we are trying to offer them the same opportunity that citizens in the rest of the city have.
Mr. Hermes.
I agree with Donna that this isn't, I don't think the intent of it was to really do a survey, or if it was, I don't think the survey would come out, you know, in favor of MCAT. And I don't think that's the fault of MCAT. I just think that if you ask people if they want to pay a dollar more for programming, they may, you know, they'd be inclined to say no. So, even though the survey, it came out that way, I'm not too sure that the people that were voting on it quite knew what they were voting on. They may have known, but that does get a little bit clouded, I think. Basically, I think Mary's proposal, as it came out in committee, is that if we do a needs assessment and lay some groundwork to show that we've got the public involved, it helps our situation if we go into a court litigation on this. It shows the court that the city has talked to its residents, and the residents have responded, that they want it. So, from that angle, I think that's kind of what we're trying to do, is lay some groundwork. And in that light, I think it's important that whoever the five people are, that we do get a cross-section. And I think it would be smart of the city council to get everybody, both anti and pro-access, and people that are interested in all forms of it.
Mr. Nugent.
At the committee meeting, Mary Canty, a Rattlesnake resident, is the one who made this proposal. When she indicated that it would not be a survey of people who reside there because the people wouldn't know what they were talking about because they hadn't received the service yet. She indicated a desire to try and identify the organizations or associations or entities that were most likely to utilize the system and provide some sort of programming into the Rattlesnake that would be of interest to the Rattlesnake people. And from that perspective, they were going to be contacting entities throughout the community to identify how they could utilize it as well as within. For example, I would imagine the school district with schools up there would be one obvious one that they would contact. But she made it clear that it was not going to be a survey similar to what Satcom did because she didn't feel that that would be a valid parameter.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Does that mean that this needs assessment then is going to be a survey of those private or public organizations who feel they have a need to send this material across the airwaves to people? And not a survey of those people, the viewers who are going to receive it? Jim, is that what I'm getting here?
As I understand it, it's going to be more akin to what you're saying than it is a survey of the people who actually reside there. And what Mary indicated was that the people that reside there haven't received the service yet, so they wouldn't fully know or understand what it's about.
Well, I think we can all tell how that's going to come out. If somebody wants something, they're going to ask for it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Harrison.
I guess it seems to me in some ways that then if they're going to contact the schools and people who may use the public access channel, that we've already done this work. I mean, it's been done, it's been done in Missoula, so I don't see a reason for this. I don't know, it seems like that need is established. I mean, if the schools, the schools have already indicated the interest for using the public access, so there's no reason to talk to them. And if we're not talking to the people who are viewing it, I don't see the need.
Jim.
In part, Mary was concerned about establishing a need in case negotiations with Satcom break down and that somehow you end up in litigation. She thought that it would be important to have that needs assessment on record somewhere.
Further discussion, Chuck.
Doing some form of needs assessment is a requirement of the 84 Cable Communications Act. But a community-wide one was done for the TCI franchise because that was meant to be not just for TCI franchise, but for the need to establish access television. Regardless of whether you want to update that or do another one, I think you have one that you relied on in the TCI franchise that did along the lines of what Larry was talking about. But that's not to say that it wouldn't be, would or would not be wise to bring that more current or to expand on it. But one was done, and it is filed in the vault.
Anything further? Mr. Harrison.
I might as well say this. I think under New Business Tonight, I'm going to bring up suspension of the rules to put off this idea of litigation for a period of time. I think, just the idea of, you know, moving toward that as the goal is unacceptable to me. It seems to me like there are 1,600-some-odd subscribers in the Rattlesnake. I was just, I figured it out fairly quickly that that would mean almost $17,000 a year in revenue to the city if they did exactly what TCI did. If litigation costs half as much as the mountain water litigation costs, it'd take us almost 12 years to recover that cost. And I just, I think we need to make a full, good-faith effort to negotiate and not litigate. So, I think under New Business Tonight, I think I'll bring that up.
Since you've brought it up here, I would just like to make clear what I had thought was clear all along. And that is that I believe that what the city should be concentrating on is negotiating. I believe, though, that this is a situation where there will be no negotiations until the city understands its willingness to litigate. But we should not seek litigation. But we won't get anywhere with negotiations until we know that if we have to, we're willing to litigate. If that distinction was not clear before, I'd like to make it clear now. I don't believe we should seek litigation. Mr. Rice.
Maybe the other side of the coin, and I don't mind if we talk about this under New Business or anywhere else. But I don't believe that we should tell Les Hilliard that we won't litigate. Because I think that we've already demonstrated that we're, or at least we've given some fairly strong indications that we aren't willing to be very strong in our negotiating stance. The basis of the agreement with TCI, well, it does not in the letter of the agreement carry any kind of language that says we will obtain franchises or negotiate franchises with the other two, there's another one, operators who operate in the city limits, did contain in both the spirit and in the negotiating settlement, and I believe in the understanding that TCI has with the city, the clear message that TCI hoped and expected the city to do that. If we are not prepared to do everything that we can, including targeting the needs assessment to the Rattlesnake, then I think that we have backed off on commitments that I feel the city did make to TCI, and that I, and that I think we need to continue to enforce and to work on if we are to keep the franchise that we currently have. The real danger here is that by not moving in this direction is that we will lose the whole thing. And I think that that's where we have to be looking at this. And I share some of the same sense that you do, Doug, that we, and also that Larry has indicated, that we have done a lot of this work. I do not, you know, the original group that did the needs assessment was considerably larger than five people and took considerably longer than the time span that I hope we're talking about for this particular assessment. But I think that it is a prudent step and not one that will cost us anything. And I think it also, I hope it will spur us to move ahead aggressively in the negotiations. And I do not think that we should take steps to say we will not move in the area of litigation in the event that those discussions do not go forward as we all hope they will.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Just a comment, Dan. We've strayed from the motion that's on the floor. These comments, discussions need to be brought up. If a motion's brought up under New Business, and I would ask that we get back on track with the motion that's on the floor.
Mr. Hermes.
I guess, as the chairman of the committee, it would be nice to get a sense of what the majority of the council wants on the litigation side. Because if that's where you want us to go, then that's the direction we can take. A little firmer stand, so Fred's point's well taken. That response would be welcomed by me tonight. Because it has been a little clear, clouded on my, I'd like to, again, take a little more time, and my goal was next year at this time. But if the council wants to move forward quicker, then I'd like to know that, too.
Any further discussion, Mr. Lucino?
I'd just like to say that I think it is important for the council to be willing to go toward litigation if negotiation gets nowhere. Because I believe that the track record of Mr. Hilliard points out that as long as we are not willing to take our commitment to that point, that we very well may not get anywhere. So, I agree with Dan's comments, for instance, that while we certainly don't seek to litigate, that would be a possibility if negotiations don't get anywhere.
Mr. Harrison.
I guess, I believe that a needs assessment for the community was done already when we were negotiating the TCI contract, our franchise, and that.
were negotiating the TCI contract, our franchise, and so I'll vote against this.
Any further discussion?
Well, the chair is certain already that he's in doubt about the outcome of this vote if we do it on a voice vote, so I'll ask that you take the roll.
Hermes.
No.
Lucino.
Yes.
McLaughlin.
No.
Potts.
No.
Reedy.
No.
Rice.
Yes.
Schaefer.
No.
Shea.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Harrison.
No.
Would the passes care to change their vote beginning with Lucino?
Yes, I'd like to vote yes.
Craig.
I don't have.
No change. Motion fails.
Next motion.
Second motion really goes hand in hand with the first, and that the committee also recommends the commencement of advertising for five city council appointments to Rattlesnake Citizens Committee. I would so move. I guess I wouldn't move word, but I.
I would ask that the motion be withdrawn so that the ludicrous nature of this motion be not any more glaringly emphasized than it is already.
I'd agree to withdraw it as part of the motion.
Without objection, the motion is withdrawn. Go on to the Economic Development Committee report. Mr. Rice.
There's a bitter irony in this. My water line went out over the weekend, Chuck. I'm not going to get six thousand dollars out of Title I funds to replace it either. The committee recommends that the city council approve a project to extend a water line through Shady Grove to the remaining free land at a net city cost not to exceed six thousand dollars to be paid out of the CDBG fund, and I would so move.
Discussion? Mr. Rice.
There is extensive documentation attached to the committee report. If there are any questions, you can ask Chuck.
Further discussion? Mr. Harrison.
I'll pass because I nearly passed.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Dan, I have, I wanted to point out that in the MCBI quarterly report, you will note that there are, in fact, two delinquent loans on the MCBI report. One for the traveling disc jockey, which you will find on the third page of the MCBI report that is attached to the Economic Development Committee minutes, will be taken care of through a personal lien or through a lien on some, on the individuals, some money that the individual has coming to them. And then the other part has to do with the trucking business, which I believe is on the fourth page of the report. Triple M Truck Brokers, I believe, and that will be, should be brought up to date as soon as the slowdown in the trucking business is picked up, probably this spring. Basically, Bill Chumrah represented that there was, would be no problems with either of these two loans, and they represent the only delinquencies that this program has had in the time that we have been reviewing it. Chuck has also noted in the second paragraph of the report that the agreement is scheduled to expire in June, so it might be, and at that time, you will recall, under the terms of the agreement, that the money that has been returned, the principal that has been returned, could in fact go back to the city at that time. So it's something to think about. End of report.
Thank you. Finance and License Committee. Mr. Reedy.
First one, the committee recommends the council approve a resolution declaring certain city of Missoula property. It's nine lots in the Hillview Heights, number seven subdivision as surplus, authorizing the sale, lease, transfer, disposal of said property once rezoning is completed and establishing a market price for the initial two sales, and I so move.
Is there any discussion? Any public comment on this resolution? If not, please call the roll.
Lucino. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Potts.
Yes.
Reedy.
Yes.
Rice. Schaefer.
Yes.
Shea.
Yes.
Wood. Craig. Harrison. Hermes. Eleven zero.
Motion carries.
Next one's claims. The committee recommends the council approve claims totaling fifty-one thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and twenty-four cents, and I so move.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
End of report.
The Judicial Review Committee.
Yes.
Mr. Reedy.
The Judicial Review Committee recommends that a city council public hearing be scheduled on both reapportionment options prepared and proposed by Doris Fisher of the Office of Community Development to be held on Monday, March eighteenth, nineteen ninety-one, and Monday, March twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-one, and I so move. And I'd like to speak on this a little bit.
Mr. Reedy.
What I'd like to say is do is congratulate Doris and Kathy Olson for the fine work that they've done on this. There's a lot of work put into this, and the rest of the committee I want to congratulate for getting this done with this so fast.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Plan Annexation and Zoning Committee, you have anything further? Okay. Public Works Committee, Mr. Potts.
The first item is change order number one with CD Contractors for Phase One Southwest Missoula Sanitary Sewer, East Cold Springs. Although a quorum was not present, the committee recommends the council pass a resolution to accept change orders number one with CD Contractors for Phase One of the Southwest Missoula Sanitary Sewer, East Cold Springs. SID number four ninety-five for the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars, and waive the city electrical and sewer permit fees for this project, and I would so move.
Is there any discussion of the motion? Roll call.
McLaughlin.
Yes.
Potts.
Yes.
Reedy.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Shea.
Yes.
Wood. Craig. Harrison. Hermes. Lucino.
Yes.
Eleven zero.
Resolution is adopted.
The next item is relocation of Highway ninety-three from Orange Street to Reserve Street and changes to the state maintenance contract. Although a quorum was not present, the committee recommended the council set a public hearing for March eighteenth, nineteen ninety-one, to consider the designation of Highway ninety-three from Orange Street to Reserve Street, and I would so move.
Discussion? Donna.
Will the final decision on whether the highway designation is changed be a city decision, or will that be a state highway department decision?
Bruce, do you want to answer that?
Bruce, under City Engineer, the decision is basically the scope of this amended contract agreement with the state. So from that basis, in order to renegotiate that contract where the state takes over Reserve Street as their route, and then we take over other routes, that's, you know, it becomes an item of negotiation. And it seems to me it's a mutual decision, basically. I guess I can't flatly say they won't do it, but it's certainly the scope right now of this agreement that they're proposing to have us look at and approve and speak to.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Can they do one without the other? Can they approve changing the route and then negotiate the street maintenance separately? Does it have to be tied together?
Well, it seems to me that it has to be the scope of that agreement because there's portions of that Reserve Street that's in the county, there's portions of it that are in the city. And it seems to me that admittedly Joe is more averse in that, and that's a difficult question you're asking, but it seems to me that they can't even take over Reserve Street as their route unless we're agreeable to it. And then that's the scope of the maintenance agreement, is that they're going to take it over from us, and then we're going to take on a certain part of their routes. And as part of taking over that Reserve Street, it's going to be re-designated or to be designated as Highway ninety-three. So I guess if we don't agree with the agreement and aren't willing to accept that, then it seems to me that the whole thing should probably fall apart. So I'm presuming that it would fall apart. Since it isn't their route. You know, if it was clearly their route, you know, then they would have the clear authority. But it seems to me that since it isn't their route right now, that they're dependent on our approval. But admittedly, Joe knows a little bit more about the intricacies of that than I do on an aspect of it.
Mr. Rice.
Well, I'm sort of in doubt as to what the answer to Donna's question is, so my question is sort of going to be more hypothetical. I think before the hearing, we should have the answer to Donna's question.
Yeah, and Joe Pott could give that.
Yeah. So I would hope that that would, and I think maybe we should have it in writing before the eighteenth. Second, I guess as a follow-up, I think it would also be a good idea to have before that what the impacts of making this change would be on the service in, on Orange Street. For example, will that mean that Orange Street will become a lower priority? I presume it would not.
No, it won't.
But then there would be some costs that the city would have to be assuming if there are not some costs that the city would be, that they would not be reimbursed for?
Not on Orange Street. There are other routes here, yes, that we will be assuming costs for. But Orange Street does not change as a state highway route. It is still the state highway's jurisdiction. They will still be paying us to maintain Orange Street.
That part doesn't change.
That's correct. As far as the maintenance of it and the operation and them paying or reimbursing us to maintain it on, as far as Orange and Stevens and that, that still stays as state route, okay? There's two elements to what's going to be happening here. There's, the one element is the state highway's taking on Reserve Street as their state highway right-of-way, okay? That's probably the first step in this. And what they're saying is that if you want us to take over portions of your city streets that are currently, we're maintaining in the city, which is the south portion of Reserve, and we got a portion of Third Street, then they want us to take over some of their routes. And that's an exchange here they're proposing, that we take over Van Buren and Patty Canyon, and I don't remember the other, there's a couple other streets there, okay? So that's one step of it, okay? The second step of the agreement is, okay, once they do take over Reserve Street, they're requesting that it be designated as Highway ninety-three and not being removed from Orange Street and Stevens and the Brook Street route. But Brooks, Stevens, and Orange will still be maintained as highway maintained and reimbursable with the city routes.
Okay, so the reimbursement, that will not change?
That's correct.
Then all the other adjustments in the routes would be subject to negotiations in our contract, is that correct?
That's correct.
Or is subject as part of it?
The scope of all these changes are part of the maintenance agreement, that's correct.
Okay. Sorry, Bruce, thank you.
No, that's fine.
Mrs. Schaefer.
But if Orange Street is no longer the highway, that will be shown on the high, on the interstate, the signs will not say Orange Street Exit, Highway ninety-three South. They will say Reserve Street Exit, Highway ninety-three South.
The sign on the interstate will say Orange Street. It'll, you know, it won't say Highway ninety-three anymore.
It won't say Highway ninety-three.
Right. It'll still say Orange Street, but it just won't say Highway ninety-three on it. Highway ninety-three would get shifted down to Reserve Street. But you still have a sign there and.
Yeah, and an exit. But what I'm concerned about is, are the businesses along.
That's correct, yeah.
Because they do get a lot of tourist trade.
Mrs. Craig.
Bruce, could it be Business Section, Highway ninety-three on Orange Street, and then Highway ninety-three on Reserve Street? Is that a possibility?
Yeah. That was, that's being discussed with the state, or sorry, that idea has been proposed to the state. In fact, I know we, the staff admittedly said that right away to the state. I know the Chamber of Commerce has said that to the state, that, you know, how about the designation of a Business Route ninety-three? But from what we're being told, that isn't typically done for US Highway ninety-three routes. That's kind of done on interstate routes, you know, Business one oh five or something like that. But that isn't done on US Highway routes. But it certainly can be, you know, a condition that the city can consider. And I think clearly you're going to hear from the chamber, that's one that they would like to have the city consider as part of its acceptance of this. But right now, anyway, the highway seems to be, the department is seeing they're hesitant to, or haven't done that before or whatever, you know?
Any further discussion? I'd just remind the council that this is a motion to set a public hearing.
Public hearing, right.
I think it's probably a good idea to figure out what questions you might want to ask them.
And that is, that is the scope of why the Highway Department requested that it be a public hearing, and they're asking the county to do the same thing so that there is public input about that re-designation.
Mr. Lucino.
It's a little off the subject, but instead of asking Bruce to come up later, I'll ask you now. I heard a rumor that the Rattlesnake Wilderness is the only wilderness around these parts, perhaps in the whole country, that has no sign pointing to that fact on the interstate nearby. Is that true? Have you heard anything about that?
I don't know about that one, Bob.
Anything more for Bruce? Thank you, Bruce. Any further discussion? Okay, the motion is on a resolution to, no, to, motion to set a public hearing. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. Potts.
The next is a request by the City-County Library to defer paving assessment and pavement replacement for sewer repair on Front Street. Although a quorum is not present, the committee recommended that the council waive the paving assessment as required by Sections twelve, point twenty-four, point one, point forty of the Missoula Municipal Code, and to have the city perform the street repairs due to a sewer repair on Front Street for the City-County Library. And I would so move.
Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
That is the last action item that they held.
We'll go on to comments from city council members. Mrs. Shea.
As I glanced in our packet and saw the receipt of notice of exercise of Option A, I reflected on this. Looks like such a modest inclusion with all of the other reports, but this official notification signifies uncountless hours' work and energy of so many people. The receipt itself speaks much louder than the words written in those two sentences. On last Wednesday, I attended the first Rattlesnake zoning and comprehensive plan meeting at the Rattlesnake School. There are about twenty-five to thirty people in attendance. The Office of Community Development is helping to facilitate the planning process. It was a very interesting meeting. There's going to be lots of work to do, and there's not a lot of time to get it done in. We'll probably end up meeting weekly so as to meet the deadlines and timetable to establish permanent zoning in the newly annexed areas of the Rattlesnake. Also, probably some of you did this, too, went out to the mall on Saturday, and actually I have a little child with me who was pretty good on a bike, and she went through the Safe Kids Bicycle Competition at South Gate Mall. Mary Cheryl and her volunteers just do a wonderful job. There were just tons of kids, all ages and sizes, happily and safely pedaling their way through different courses. It was quite a good event. I wasn't sure, I'm sure the Robins know more than we do, because I'm not sure if it's spring or not, but I've seen a lot of Robins.
Mr. Rice. Mrs. Schaefer.
I have two announcements to make tonight. One is that I volunteered to take Mayor Chemist's place on the city cemetery board when he can't be there. And the other is an announcement that I have decided to run for another term. It is only a matter of coincidence that I am announcing these two things on the same night. And there was one city councilwoman who said, but those people are dead. What difference?
And there was one city councilwoman who said, "But those people are dead. What difference does that make?" And believe it or not, her husband grew up in Butte. But I will be running again tonight. I hope that I would get the support from the wards, the ward that I need.
Mr. Wood.
And the cemetery is in our ward, so it's good for votes.
Mr. Lucino.
No comment.
Mrs. Craig.
Well, I'm delighted at your announcement, Donna, that you're going to run again. It just wouldn't be the same without you.
Mr. Harrison. Mr. Hermes.
Just like to congratulate the University of Montana basketball team on winning the Big Sky Conference regular season title and also congratulating them on hosting the tournament coming up this weekend. It'll be a great thing for the city and also for the Lady Grizz. And Robin Selvig does it so often, it's becoming commonplace. But congratulations to both programs. And I think the city is really going to benefit this weekend from a lot of extra in-town trade.
Mr. McLaughlin.
I'd like to echo Bob's comments about the Grizzlies. Both programs did very well this year. We're getting used to the Lady Grizz winning. They've done just a super job for years. The men have brought a tournament here for the first time in, I believe, 13 years. It's been a long wait, and we're happy to have it back. The business community is, I'm sure, very happy to have it back. I would also like to congratulate the Sentinel High School boys, or men's, I guess I should say, basketball team. They had an excellent year. They had a tough time over the state tournament. But they were picked in the preseason polls to finish sixth out of seventh in Western Conference. They won it going away and had an outstanding year, and they should all be congratulated. I received a couple of phone calls this past week from residents of the Bellevue Wapakia over the sewer program that we're putting in place over there. They were concerned about the fact that the initial costs have gone from about $2,500 to $5,600 and some dollars. It's a pretty good jump. The jump is due to the enormous amount of people that have decided to hook up to the sewer system. We didn't anticipate that many. But yet it is a rather substantial increase in the cost to these people. And when we do get into the public hearings, I would hope that they come down to speak to this and that this council will listen. We've dipped into our pockets for parkland. Maybe we can dip into our pockets to help save our water in this community, too. And Donna, only one last comment, and I was wondering if there was any truth to the fact that half of your votes came from that cemetery in class election.
I'll let you talk to my campaign manager.
Mr. Reedy.
Yeah, congratulations to the Grizz and welcome, Board Donna. I'm glad to see that you're going to run. I'd hate to think that we'd lose our reporter when we go on these trips.
Mr. Potts. Staff comment? Mary Cheryl.
Mary Cheryl Hall, I'm the bicycle coordinator, and thank you, Elaine, for kind of previewing. I did want to take a few minutes to report about the event at Southgate Mall. Cycle Challenge 6 is an event that was conceived by the Missoula Bicycle Program, and we did put it together, and this is our sixth year, that's why the six. And this year, we did have over 400 kids participate. The mall reported that their car count was 12,717, a 5% from last year's. And that count equates to an estimated 26,706 persons in the mall. They use some sort of formula. And this bicycle rodeo event is special and really unique. And as I said, it's coordinated by myself and my people staff with the Missoula Bicycle Program. But the local youth serving agencies staff the various skill stations. And this gives them the opportunity to know the city services offered through the Missoula Bicycle Program. So when the Boy Scouts or the 4-H Plan of Bicycle Program, they do have access to the most current information. One aspect of this program, though, that is so special is that kids get a one-on-one with an adult or another young person. For example, this year, we had the Sheriff's Office cadets. We're out there in their uniforms and really good. So it's these young people that are looking right in the eye of these kids and saying, in essence, this is important enough to me that I'm here volunteering my time to tell you about some bicycle safety skills that I think is important. So this is, you know, kids usually are in a group of, what, 20-plus at school? And then they're a scout group or whatever. They're 10-plus, and at home, probably 2-plus. And whenever they get one-on-one with an adult, it's usually a reprimand. And so this is an opportunity for a real positive experience for kids. Says you are important, and I feel strongly about giving you this information, so it's really neat. Another aspect that I wanted to share that is unique to Missoula is that we have a safety trailer that we use. All the bicycles come from this Stevensville Safety Trailer. And Bill Wyatt lost his 14-year-old son down by Stevensville three years ago in a bike accident. And he felt so strongly about, you know, what had happened there that he wanted to be sure that other parents would not, you know, suffer the same loss that he has. And he has outfitted this trailer with 16 Shred Predator bicycles and helmets. And it's used here by the bicycle program in the summer and the fall. And then in the spring, we kick it off with the cycle challenge, and then it goes down to Stevensville. But Bill comes out, sets it up Friday night. He's there all day Saturday, wants to talk to parents, is really committed to the program and bicycle education. Southgate Mall, Classy Radio and Messenger were this year's cosponsors. We printed and distributed 8,000 flyers that included the annual helmet coupon campaign information this year. As well as the flyers, the information was printed in the messenger that reaches 32,000 homes in the Missoula trade area. I was trying to do some calculation, and I figured this event involved over 500 hours of volunteer manpower to set up and run and would not have happened without the commitment to bicycle safety of the participating volunteer agencies and the need for bicycle safety education felt by the parents to bring their kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Cheryl. Any other staff comment? Not, we'll go on to new business. Is there any new business to come before the council? Mr. Harrison.
I guess I'd move to suspend the rules to talk about this litigation idea on this thing. I think it's an important enough issue that we should at least discuss if we're all here.
The motion is to suspend the rules. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. Harrison.
I guess I'd make the motion just so that we can have some discussion on it, that we don't pursue litigation on this issue of, you know, litigation with SatCom until at least, I don't like February 1st of next year, if I can speak to that.
Mr. Harrison.
I guess really all I'm saying with this motion is that we fully intend to expend all good faith efforts in negotiating the franchise agreement with this company. And that we intend to negotiate without holding a hammer over their head. While it has its place, litigation should be a last resort. And the cost of litigation is prohibitive in light of the benefit received for this, at least until all the other alternatives are exhausted. And I think that's the way we should move. I think we should set it down so it's real clear.
Mr. McLaughlin.
I think I'm going to support Doug's motion tonight for a couple of reasons. The lawsuit that the Supreme Court is dealing with right now, I think, is an important factor. I'd like to see myself the conclusion of that lawsuit before we, in fact, move ahead with SatCom. If we give this person a year, this company a year, as Doug has indicated, I think it's going to take at least that long to negotiate with him. If we do get through the negotiations and the lawsuit is favorable to the local government, we can put this franchise in place without any problem. If the lawsuit is in favor of local government and we cannot negotiate with SatCom, I think it's important for that company to realize that this council will go ahead with negotiations at the end of that time period. I, for one, will vote to give the committee and this council a year to negotiate with the company, but I won't give them any longer than that. But I would vote for the extension to find out the conclusion of the lawsuit.
Mrs. Shea.
Doug, I don't feel real strongly on either side of this issue. I mean, I have heard from some residents, and that's important because they are the ones that are going to be affected by this, primarily the people in the Rattlesnake. But I'm wondering, if you're not giving a gift to Rattlesnake Cable by saying, "We will not go into litigation for a year." And I'm not sure that I want to give a gift at this point. I think it's important to proceed with negotiations and not give any deadlines to that, whether it's a year or six months. I would like that to be open-ended. And for that fact, I cannot support your motion.
Mr. Rice.
The net effect of this motion is to give them two years because there's not going to be a lawsuit that's going to be prepared and ready to go in time to get it, to affect the current way that this particular matter is being handled, that is, through the business license. The, by saying that we will not litigate, we're essentially putting it off for another year, which is to say two years, which will make it five years from the time that we negotiated the TCI franchise. It is a rather blatant misstatement of the fact to say that we have not been negotiating with Mr. Hilliard. We have negotiated with all three of the cable companies. Mr. Hilliard has appeared before this body and spoken to us about his concerns on several different occasions. There's not a person in this room, except perhaps Bob and Will, who has not been here when Mr. Hilliard has spoken to us about the various matters that have been on his mind as far as cable franchising is concerned. By saying that we will not litigate until February 1 of 1992, we basically are going to be granting another business license or doing something and dragging it out. As far as waiting for this particular legal case, as I've said many times, the current generation in the industry is running somewhere in the 12 to 24-month range. In other words, there's a complete change. There's some new technology that comes along about once a year or every 18 months that changes the way that we think about these things. There will be cases before the Supreme Court until, for the rest of my lifetime, I'm sure, having to do with communication. We cannot predicate our action on any one case. The Cable Act of 1984 will be amended. Congress, every year, considers new legislation, some of which will ultimately make its way into law. But if we are to sit here and go through every possible case and consider every possible wrinkle, we will never do anything. We just can't. There's too much, and we do not, if we're concerned about litigation, if we were to put somebody on it full-time to try and imagine the way the law was going to go, the way the Supreme Court was going to go, the way Les Hilliard was going to go, that's a full-time job for somebody, and it would cost more than the mountain water litigation. I suggest that rather than making this motion, we make no motion that we negotiate in earnest, but we allow the committee to make the recommendation when they feel, after they have specified some sort of plan that they have put in, they have tried to implement, and when it does not go through, that's when we should say, okay, we have negotiated as much as we can negotiate. This is essentially just tying our hands behind our back.
Further discussion. Mr. Harrison.
I'd refer you to the backside of your amendments. I guess Mary Canty handed out an article out of Cable Vision dated February 11, 1991. The first sentence in here says that this spring, the US Supreme Court will hand out an opinion, you know, that would affect that. I think this spring, that's any time now. One of the things that says in the very last paragraph of this article, and I'll spare you the whole article, but it says that a broadly issued opinion in favor of cables finally would certainly set the foundation on which the next case for First Amendment purposes would be in the regulatory area. My concern is that we are not that case in Missoula, Montana, for the benefit that we would receive. $17,000 a year is minimal. I mean, we spent over a quarter of a million dollars on the mountain water case, and we're not going to do that with this, not for $17,000 worth of benefit a year. I mean, so I think a little time is in the city's best interest. That's all I'm saying. And this can be changed. This is not set in stone. If we fully try to negotiate in good faith with these people, it cannot be done. This can be changed at any time. It's just a majority vote of the council, just like anything else is.
Further discussion. Mrs. Schaefer.
I'm somewhat perplexed by this situation. I can see Elaine's point that this is giving away a bargaining chip or giving him a gift, and Fred said it's merely delaying it. But I also see Doug's point that we cannot go on the way we are and expect to accomplish anything. Just reading the minutes of this last Cable Television Committee tells you that. And I think the committee needs to know, I mean, needs to know that the council wants them to negotiate. At least, that's what I want them to do. So I guess I see Doug's motion as the lesser of two evils.
Mr. Lucino.
I don't see this particularly as a revenue issue. For instance, Doug, you said that for the $17,000 the city would gain, it's not worth it in terms of the potential costs we would incur in pursuing litigation. I don't see it as an opportunity to receive more revenue for the fund, but rather I see it as a, this is an occasion where we want to provide the same service up to those city taxpayers that is provided to taxpayers in the valley through the TCI signal. I do understand the money difference, and I do understand that it could cost the city more money than they would get back as far as the franchise fees, but that's not the focus of it, as far as I'm concerned.
Mrs. Craig.
I agree with Fred's point. I think the committee now knows that the council wants them to get the negotiations moving. And if they can't, maybe then they can come back and decide to litigate. But I don't, I can't agree with Doug's motion that we definitely don't for another year.
Mr. Rice.
Yeah, the point is to get the negotiations going. Let's have the motion that says that. And I would be in favor of that, and I would be in favor, as I said last week, of having a plan and timetable, a projected timetable, so that we can judge how successfully we are moving in that direction. And if, in fact, we are not making satisfactory progress in those negotiations, then I think we should explore what options are available to us. If Doug is correct, and if this, and if the article does say could, doesn't say will, if the face of the landscape is much changed, we do not, we are not committing ourselves to litigation. But it seems to me that we should not commit ourselves to no litigation for a year. That just seems to me to, you know, a negotiating strategy that begins by giving away the farm is not going to be a very successful strategy. Mr. Hilliard will have access to these, the minutes here, and will, in fact, read through them. And he will take what counsel he can from the comments that are made here. I think that it would be a real mistake to send him a message that says, we're not willing to go as far as it takes to get this franchise done. And I think that's what we should do. We should say, we are intent on having a franchise with SatCom by the 28th of, I guess, or the 29th of February, 1992. I think that that would be a strong statement, one we should make, and that leaves our options open. We're not saying we will litigate. We're not saying that we will not litigate. The other thing I would like to point out to those who have suggested that these are relatively recent discussions, Mr. Hilliard has been in rooms on one-on-one situations with members of the Cable Advisory Committee with, in the three incarnations that I'm familiar with. He has negotiated with the city on many different occasions. According to Ron Wheeler, it has been 12 years that we have been negotiating with Mr. Hilliard. My recollection and notes indicate 14, but that includes two years when the city was not the primary mechanism whereby those discussions were taking place. But I think that we should be very clear that this is not a new development. This is now going into its second decade.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Well, I've sat here and listened for the past 10 minutes about what we want and what Mr. Hilliard wants and what Empcat wants. But nobody here has mentioned anything about the people we represent and what they want. And I think it's important that we realize that it's the viewers, the people who pay the bills, the people who pay their taxes, that we're here to represent. And if those people don't want this in the Rattlesnake, then why are we trying to shove it down their throats? I think it's important to realize that, and I think it's important that we try to negotiate an agreement here. And I think it's important that we try to negotiate an agreement here that the people who live up there will be happy with, that the city would be happy with, and that maybe Satcom would be happy with. But while we sit here and say, this is what we're going to do to him, and this is what MCAT wants us to do to him, and this is what MCAT wants, and have Mr. Hilliard come back and say, well, I'm not going to do that, I'm going to take you to court because we have a federal case in the Supreme Court right now that says you can't do that, I think it's ludicrous. I think we ought to sit back, find out what's going to happen and try to negotiate a settlement with these people that's fair and that is in agreement with what the viewers and the rattlesnake want. And if eighty, if 800 out of 1,000 questionnaires say they don't want it, I have to believe that there's a lot of people up there that don't want it. And straw vote or not, the hand vote was about the same. So I think rather than, rather than say, we're going to do this and this is, we're going to do it on a timetable, I think we ought to work out a negotiated settlement here.
Mr. Lucino?
You know, we could do needs assessments on a variety of things that are provided to citizens in Missoula, and I think we're always going to find a variety of opinions in those surveys in terms of how they come back. And there's a built-in assumption, in my part at least, that there, as I said earlier, there would be a lot of people on the TCI signal that would say, well, gee, I'm paying the franchise fee, but I don't really utilize that, so if I had my way, yeah, I don't want to pay, I don't want to pay that franchise fee. But we'd find that, you know, in a variety of issues. And again, I'd like to stress that assuming that we're always going to have a variety of opinions and we're going to have people that don't want a service and people that want a service, that's not it. We just want to have consistency everywhere within the city. And speaking for someone who is on the Cable TV Committee, I don't look forward to being on this committee and getting into a possible negotiation position where I feel stripped of future options. I think that's going to inhibit our case with the other side and I think it puts us in a weak position.
Mr. Harrison?
I just want to be perfectly clear. I'm not, I'm not saying that we'll never, that I will never support us going to court on this issue. What I am saying is that I believe that we should totally exhaust every alternative before we go to court on this. That's, that's pretty much what I'm saying. That can't happen in a month. I mean, we, I think we need to seriously look at this. I don't know, I think that's not unreasonable.
Mrs. Schae?
Two things. The people that I have heard from constituents in the rattlesnake are in favor of receiving MCAT. I have not heard from anyone to this point who does not want to receive it. And I'm open to people who have an opinion about that. And secondly, my question to Bob or Doug or whoever animated the survey results, I get the rattlesnake cable and although I participated in that survey, I have not received the official results. And did I hear someone say that out of 1,000 responses, 800 were negative? I don't know where that came from.
Mr. Hermes?
That number was from Les, Les Hilliard. He sent out, according to Les, and he's supposed to be sending us copies of the survey. And I, he said that he sent out 1,500 ballots and I had read a few weeks ago the wording of his question to the rattlesnake cable subscribers. It basically said that, would you be in favor of paying about a dollar a month extra for having the ability to watch city council meeting and public meetings? And there were some inaccuracies in there. For instance, he said the money raised would go to MCAT. Well, as Al Sampson, I think, pointed out one night, that money will go to the council and then we'll decide where the money will go. So that was inaccurate. And he had mentioned that there would be no high school sports shown on the, on the channel and he was referring to the Montana High School Association rule that no telecast are possible without their, without their approval. But anyway, with the 1,500 he sent out, he's received about 80% back. And of those, he, I don't remember the numbers exactly, I believe it was 800 and 60 were against and 200 and some were in favor or 150 were in favor of that. I think Dan's analogy that those type of polls will always come back negative is true. I mean, I agree with Bob. If we'd have asked the Missoula citizens in Missoula if they would have wanted to have TCI carry city council meetings for a dollar and a quarter more a month, I'm sure we would have got a huge majority saying no. It's like, do you want a tax and will you support it? The answer is usually going to be no. And again, tax is, not my word, tax is what Les Hilliard is calling it. We're calling it a franchise fee and that's accurate.
And he mentioned tax in that letter, as I remember the survey.
He's calling it a tax or some people call it a luxury tax for those who have cable. They will pay extra to get this service. And again, I'm not talking about that.
So that official report hasn't come out yet?
No, but I'll get you a copy when I get it. I have requested it.
Okay, thanks Bob.
Mr. Lucino?
I think there might be a misunderstanding on the public's part and I don't think that even in maybe some of my own comments, I have represented something fairly and that is, some people have the impression that the franchise fee was created strictly for the purpose of providing a community access TV channel in Missoula, and that's not true. I would like some clarification on that, if someone would please offer that, exactly why we have a franchise fee, just for the public record, and is it strictly for the sole purpose of funding the MCAT station.
Well, do any of the chair, chairs of the Cable TV Committee, past or present, care to take a shot at answering that question? Bob?
I defer to Fred since I was here before myself. Under the Cable Act, as a city municipality may enact a franchise fee which may be a non-exclusive fee for all cable operators. The purpose of the fee is to cover various kinds of, is basically a licensing fee to be used for, in return for securing access to public easements on public right-of-ways. That is what a fee, the franchise fee is for. It covers the cost of access to the public right-of-way. The Cable Act says, says that a municipality may enact such a fee. It doesn't require us to do that. Historically, these fees have been used for access capabilities. There are certain things that municipalities can negotiate with cable companies about the kinds of service they provide. It is, as I read the act, a, an attempt on the part of Congress to recognize that cable operators are in some ways very different from broadcast, media, print, and other print media in that they do not generally originate material, but are simply providing access to material. In, over-the-air broadcasters, for example, have certain public obligations, whereas cable operators do not have those public obligations, that is, to provide certain kinds of comment and certain kinds of access. Therefore, in the franchise agreements, public access capabilities may be negotiated as part of the franchise, and that is what we have done. It is, it is subject, however, to negotiation. It is not subject to, we cannot dictate entirely the terms of those, of those agreements. Similarly, in the program mix, we are not allowed to dictate the particulars of a, in other words, we cannot specify whether it will be KSPS or KVD or whatever educational station it is, but we can, in fact, negotiate certain kinds of service. In other words, a superstation, I believe, is what we use for one of our categories, which we get WTBS, which is out of Atlanta, an educational station, which depending on which system you're on, maybe Denver or Spokane or Salt Lake, those kinds of things. We can specify a type of program. We cannot, we cannot say we will absolutely have WGN or WTBS. The, let's see, what is the other, there's one other thing that I had floating around here. Rates. The, right now, Congress is considering the ability of municipalities to regulate rates, but we currently do not have the ability to regulate rates. We can, again, negotiate and specify, have some ability to negotiate tiers of service, but we cannot specify that a basic rate will, will be at $10.75, for example. That, again, can be negotiated. Those can be included in a franchise agreement, but we have, there's only so far we can go before we're subject to litigation. So basically, the franchises themselves are subject to negotiations within some fairly wide parameters. And it is based on a combination of things. One, the recognition, a very, it seems to me, very carefully crafted attempt to skirt First Amendment-type issues to provide some of the protections that are written into the broadcast laws and also to protect the ability of the cable operators to operate their business in a way that is fiscally, that guarantees them some sort of fiscal return on their investment.
Any further discussion, Mr. Hermes?
I think Doug's motion does a couple of good things, both for the city and for MCAT, in that it's undoubtful that we are doing a very good thing for Satcom. We are letting them off the hook, so to speak, and it's a good base gesture on our part. I can see how he'll have no way, next year at this time, for not entering into agreement with us because of this, if this passes tonight. So I would support it for that reason. He has indicated he would carry MCAT up there free of charge and I agree with MCAT's position that it must be carried uncensored. And we are currently going to be working on that, I'm sure, no matter what happens here tonight, to see how, if he'll respond to that.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Fred, I have a couple of questions on what you just said. You brought up an interesting point and that was that the franchise fees you said are to be used for access to the...
That's the justification for being allowed to charge them.
And that thus, it's a fee. It's an access fee.
It is a, yes, that's why they're called fees.
So what happens if this council then decides to take some of those fees and not use them as access fees, but transfers them to the general fund? Does it then become an access tax?
No. Well, we can't, we can't change the fee. I'm, I think I understand what you're saying and I don't believe that it becomes a general fund unless, it goes into the general fund unless we transfer it to the general fund. So it is not, it is, it could be used for purposes that, that general fund monies are used for, but that doesn't change the authority that we are granted under federal law for levying that fee.
But by taking that fee and not using it, using it for what Congress has designated it to be used for, does not change it in any way?
As, as we've discussed in the past, Larry, there is, there have been some cases as well about whether or not franchise fees can, collected for the purposes under the Act or in fact can be used for general services that a municipality has. And the, it has been litigated in some areas and the results are mixed.
Has the board, during, during committee meetings, has the board for MCAT at any time made any mention that they feel that these funds are to be used exclusively for MCAT operations?
No.
They haven't?
Only I have.
Only you have.
Mr. Harrison?
I just want to make one final point. My comments tonight don't reflect a position for or against MCAT in the rattlesnake. I'm not talking about MCAT. I'm, I'm just talking about how we negotiate a franchise agreement with Satcom. That's totally my concern.
If I could just make a couple of comments here. We had some discussion last week about the relative roles of the city council and the mayor's office in these negotiations. I'm happy to have those roles clarified. I think that we have, over the last few months, sometimes been unclear about who the lead contact with Satcom was or should be. I have been told that I'm supposed to include Mr. Hermes if I'm in contact with Mr. Hilliard. I, on the other hand, have often felt that Mr. Hermes has been in touch with Mr. Hilliard at times that I didn't know anything about it and, and I think that the most important thing is to be clear about who's doing the negotiating. And I, I think that clearly the time has come for the council to take the responsibility for the negotiating here. That has been done in the past and it can be done again now. And I think that this is a good time to do it. My concern all along has been that having entered into an agreement with TCI, that we jeopardize that agreement if we don't pursue very vigorously getting a contract with Satcom. I did not believe that it was in the city's interest to jeopardize that TCI agreement and that was what has motivated me in being fairly aggressive and trying to get an agreement with Satcom. I think that under the motion before you now, that from my perspective at least, that it would be very, very difficult to have fruitful negotiations, but I may be proven wrong. I would not willingly negotiate for the city under this motion, but I will not expect to have the responsibility for negotiating under this motion. All those in favor of the motion? All right. Call the roll.
On Doug Harrison's motion to not pursue litigation until at least February 1, 1992? Potts?
Yes.
Reedy?
Yes.
Bryce?
No.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Shay?
No.
Wood?
No.
Craig?
No.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hermes?
Yes.
Lucino?
No.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Motion passed at 6.5.
Is there any other new business? If not, we'll go on to items to be referred. Chuck?
We have one that was too late for the agenda. It's a request by Ron Vaught regarding review of Helen Kay loan to economic development.
I'm sorry, which loan?
Helen Jamie Kay loan. And that's just because when you revise the loan last year, you put a one-year review on it.
That's correct.
Request by Mayor Chemis regarding McDonald's Trash-a-thon to conservation. Request by Kathy Olson regarding approval of final report for most recent phase of cultural planning process to economic development. Request by Chuck Sterns regarding claims to finance and license. Request by Joy Earls regarding resolution, repealing resolution number 4684 pertaining to Heritage Day to judicial review. Request by Zoe Moheski regarding request by Larry Anderson for business license and building permit on unzoned property at 500 East Alder to PAZ. Petition number 6952, request by Lawrence A. Hurt to annex daily addition number two, Platte S., east 153 and a half feet of Track 2, Block 3, and 2 and 1/2 acres of Block 6 at the address of 2135 South 7th Street West to PAZ. Request by Jim Oberhofer regarding confirmation of Mike Sunderland as lieutenant in police department to public safety. Request by Jim Oberhofer regarding confirmation of Bill Wicks as sergeant in police department to public safety. Request by Mike Craig regarding resolution on indigent care goals and objectives to public safety. Request by Carla Kraus regarding East Cold Springs Sewer District easements for 2705 to 2711 Garland, 4303 Rainbow Drive, 2624 South Hills Drive, and 2620 Briggs to Public Works. Request by Bruce Bender regarding encroachment agreement at 800 Cypress Court to Public Works. Request by Bruce Bender regarding right-of-way easement for Wapakia Bellevue Sewer Project, Block 61 Carline Addition to Public Works. And request by Mayor Chemis regarding letter from Phil Smith pertaining to waiving the $75 permit fee for connecting to the sewer at 638 Plymouth to Public Works.
Any further referrals? If not, we'll go on to announcements of committee meetings.
Next Monday at 7:15.
Monday?
Monday.
You won't get...
You won't get through some of those on Monday, Jack. Four?
Only one.
Only one.
You're just going to do the claims? Is that what you want to do, and hold Jamie Kay's?
Jamie Kay?
Oh, I thought it was finance.
No, to economic development.
What a deal. I guess you can do it, thanks.
Judicial review.
No meeting.
Plaid annexation and zoning.
Yes.
Tuesday at four-thirty.
Public safety.
Tuesday at four.
Public works.
Thursday at three.
Budget committee.
Al's gone. I mean, only one more month we start budgeting, right? He's putting this off. It should be coming.
Cable TV Committee.
Thursday at four.
Conservation.
Conservation will meet Thursday at three-thirty to take up with items eight and nine. And I'm sort of uncertain, what's seven?
It's a regular agreement that BFI requires Parks Department to...
That's right. Okay. I'll talk to Jim. Maybe we can get that done, too. We'll see if we can do six and seven, but eight and nine for sure.
Okay, economic development?
Thursday at three. And we will just deal with, we'll try to do, we'll do four, and we'll try to do three.
How about five?
What is five?
Helen Jamie Kay's loan.
Oh, five, right, yeah, right. Four and five, and maybe three if we have time.
Okay, Sin Norton and Subcommittee. And Sunlight Lands Subcommittee.
Wednesday at three-thirty. And I would ask that we use, if it's available, the council conference room instead of the mayor's conference room. And also, the mayor and I spoke about this last week, that Mike Cress, Joe Aldegary, Jim Van Foss, and Dennis Taylor, that those departments be represented. And then if there are any people who signed up for the Sunlight Lands Committee through OCD, be contacted if they wanted to be a part of the planning process.
Okay, finance and license, Monday at seven-fifteen PM. No judicial review. Plaid annexation and zoning, Tuesday at four-thirty. Public safety, Tuesday at four. Public works, Tuesday at three. No budget committee meeting. Cable TV Committee, Thursday at four. Conservation, Thursday at three-thirty. Economic development, Thursday at three. No Sin Norton Subcommittee and Sunlight Lands, Wednesday at three-thirty in the council conference room.
Okay, we do have a legislative caucus on adjournment. We'll give ourselves a couple of minutes here. If there's nothing further, we're adjourned.